Good evening, everybody. This is the February 8th board work session number two for the 20, uh, the budget. In this work session, we will look at and be presented with salaries and benefits and increases and changes therein. Before we get started, I'd like to do attendance. So I will just go through who's here and who's online. Mr. Richards will be arriving later, so I'll start with that. So Gina.
I am here.
Brenda Hastings.
Here.
Danielle Smith.
Here.
Jonathan.
Here.
Pamela Walsh.
Here.
David Parker.
I am here remote and I am alone.
Thank you. Kate West.
I am here remote. I am alone for now, but my eight-year-old is in the house.
Mr. Richards will be arriving late. Per usual, I'm going to hand this meeting right over to Mr. Dunn as he is the man when it comes to the budget. So, Mr. Dunn, please commence.
Okay, thank you. So this presentation is in your Google share. And it will be posted online if it isn't already with the website issues that were resolved.
We can't hear.
Sorry, you can't hear me?
No, I don't think the-
All right, I'll ask him to, hold on one second. Yeah, just ask him if he could turn it up and there we go. We're good. So for tonight, we'll just review again the budget goals. We'll look at enrollment, some position changes, very brief section on salary. Most of this will be in benefits. And then we'll go over the proposed schedule of meetings and answer any questions that you may have. So first, we'll talk about the overall goals. Again, staying within your class size guidelines and adding the ELO or extending the ELO from a .6 to a 1. For student services, we'll be adding the SAP counselors on both the regular ed and student ed with the announcement of the new ESER II funds. We'll be working on goals to use those funds for both the regular and special ed. And on the technology, and we're looking to upgrade the one-to-one devices at the middle school, upgrade the wireless in the district, which has been five years, and upgrade about 175 teacher laptops, and also modernize some HR functions and move to more of an electronic than paper-based system. And for facilities and debt service in this budget, we do maintain 5% of the operating budget for debt, and we do have some facility upgrades proposed as well. They'll be talked about this Wednesday, the 10th, at 5:00 for the enrollments. This is your class size policy, number 641. This is the history of enrollment from last year back per level. And this next slide shows where we are in 2020, 2021 versus where we're projecting to be with classes in 2021, 2022. So it's a lot of information, but as you can see, it's broken out by each of the elementary schools with the total number of students, what that would mean by teacher, and what you see for an average class size. Donna, anything else I should highlight here?
Just that it's our best estimate based on communication with families about what their intent is, and so we've tried to be conservative, leave room for students who may be coming back.
So as we mentioned to you at the elementary level, there was a number of teachers, it's 93 current year, next year, we're proposing 91. Yep.
And is that based on retirements or are you recommending laying off existing?
Recommending laying off existing teachers.
It's purely based on class size. That's what drives the numbers. So it'll either be through attrition, but if there isn't enough retires or place in there, then it's a reduction in force. For the superintendent's contingency, again, that's created to provide funding to support positions that may become needed during the time between when the budget is created and after it's passed, we get into the year and there needs to be some additional staffing. This is developed to do that. And what's made it up, what makes up the dollar amount is two teachers, one educational assistant, one program assistant, and one tutor. Those positions total $332,000. That's what makes up the contingency. For the middle school enrollment. Donna, do you mind speaking to this a little bit?
So again, this is the best estimate about the number of students we're going to see in grade six, grade seven, and grade eight at Runlet. And just to give you a sense of what the class sizes would be, given-
Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. How about now? I'm right up against my microphone, so.
That's better.
Okay, so this is the best guess of enrollment for grade six, seven, and eight at Runlet for the, for next year, and the class sizes that would ensue with those numbers. So we're still seeing that our class sizes are reasonable, and it involves a reduction of two teachers.
What is that comparison that we have that for the elementary school, but I don't see it for Runlet?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a little trickier to do it for Runlet the way the classes are, but I could get it to you for just the full, the full class size for the whole grade for core classes, the average. I can do that, yeah.
And then for Concord High School and the Regional Technical Center, that meeting will be for work session nine, which is March 10th at 5:30. That's where we'll discuss the enrollments because those classes have not been chosen yet. Believe they'll be starting that process shortly. So we talk about positions. We were talking about the SAP counselors. It's a description of that position. Again, these, this position was originally funded through a grant and was phased out over multiple years, and now the grant is finally, it's done. So we either need to end it or pick it up into the general fund, which is what we're proposing.
If there's a possibility that that grant could come back, but right this minute, we don't believe it will, but I will say that we're going to keep our eyes on it and see if it comes back.
Jack, where is that on the budget? The 60, 610,000 series?
So when you look into, when I, I'll come back to that and show you where-
Okay.
That's all right. Because you have two different budget sheets in front of you. One is by function and one is by object. So when you look in the salaries, it is likely going to be into the pupil services. I will find it on this side. It's easier to find under the programming, but I'll come back to that.
If I can add a little description of that position from the years I taught in the district, which was a long time ago through now, the student assistance program, we were a district that had this program long before other districts did. These men and women that work in this program with our students spend hours. It's, you know, you look at it as addiction and drugs and alcohol and those kinds of things, but what ends up happening, not surprisingly, is those folks deal with a variety of issues, family issues, poverty issues, bullying, all sorts of things. It's a tremendous program that has a narrow focus outwardly, but those, those staff are a wonderful, a wonderful complement to our guidance staff and all that kind of stuff. So if people aren't familiar with those particular positions, they're, they're really well, well-done and phenomenal positions for our kids.
And thanks, Barbara, for that. This is just an introduction to it for tonight's overview, and it's going to be included in the curriculum and technology night, the actual deeper-
Yep.
-presentation and discussion. But that's great.
And then next is the ELO coordinator, which we propose increasing from a .6 to a 1.0. And I believe that position came into the district last year. Am I correct, Donna, into last year's budget? The ELO coordinator?
At .6, yes.
And now we're proposing to go to 1.0. Okay, for the salaries. We're going to give you a summary just of all the different groups and what those salary increases were to their base contracts. Majority of the staff is unionized staff, so those collective bargaining agreements will dictate, depending on when they expire or what year they're in, what their increases are. In front of you, we gave you for, we don't have to go through this in detail tonight, but at least gives you a start to start looking. If you want to see all the salaries and what they total, when you look at the budget by object, that groups all the salaries together. And then when you do look at the budget by function, each salary for each function in the district. And this is all dictated by the 1999 financial handbook put out by the state. So as noted here, there are, there were four agreements that were up this year. The maintenance transportation group has settled already, but we still have the teachers' nurses, which is in one group, the administrative assistants, and the food service folks as well, that will need to be settled this year. And then you could see next year, you have administrators, transportation, and custodians and tutors.
Jack, are nurses on the teaching scale? Is that where they're together or are they a separate?
They're a separate scale.
Okay.
Okay. So this year, we propose a general fund budget of $46,885, I believe that should be the bottom line number on your sheet for salaries.
How many of these negotiations are annual versus some others that are like every five years?
Well, it depends on what the negotiation is. So for example, before the last contract with the instructional assistant, that was a two-year contract. And now they're on a three-year cycle. It all depends on what you negotiate. The only ones that are subject are the unaffiliated.
Thank you.
So the majority of our employees is still TBD though, right, on our?
Right, because the reason why is their contract ends. So if they don't have a contract, everything stays. There's no step increases or salary increases. So that's why I leave it to be determined.
No step?
No, we don't. Historically, we've never done that. Okay?
It's reimbursed retroactively once the, yeah.
And that's depend, that's also negotiated as well. We have done it where we have not, depending on the group that's negotiated, we'll only give from the time the contract is forward. That's up to you, so. Okay? I'm going to go on to the benefits. There's a lot of information in here. So as we've spoke about already, New Hampshire retirement, which is the big one, you see that increases a little over a million for teachers and non-teachers, which I didn't break out that detail. I believe that one's like 300-some thousand. For your health care, you're looking at a little over, it's 5.54% increase in this budget, but that's after everything's adjusted. We had a 4.2, 4.2% increase in our medical rates this year. But overall, we are running below school care's trend or sign of what they call book of business. So we, we're doing pretty well, but we do have a lot of 150,000-plus claimants, which are the high claimants, and they are pulled together and offloaded into another carrier that school care manages for us, but we are seeing an increase in those high claimants. As we mentioned to early retirees, we do, depending on the collective bargaining agreement, we do pick up anywhere from 50 to 65% of a single or two-person medical plan, and that is what we're proposing budgeting for that. You'll see a slide a little later on that gives a little bit more detail. We also have school care, which I did not update that last number. We had at the time in March of '20, a year ago, we had 325 enrolled, and these are people that are 65 and older. They're allowed to stay on the school care plan, but they pay for it at their expense. For dental, we are self-insured for dental. The employees do not pay anything for dental, and we budget $705,039, or an increase of about $3,900 or .57%. And for workers' comp, we received our not-to-exceed notice, so every year about November, the insurance carrier, which is Primex, notifies us of our increase, and so far, we've been notified that there'll be no increase this year. And then for our life and disability, death and dismemberment, we have, we are in the second year of our rate guarantee, so there's no increase in that plan as well. So we propose a general fund budget of about a little over $23,700,000. It's an increase of $2 million. Most of that is in the health and New Hampshire retirement. So again, this slide you, we showed you that night of the increase on New Hampshire retirement, and we stress that because there is nothing we can do about it. It is governed by statute, and the legislature with the changes to the retirement system has to fund it. So I did call because I wanted to make sure from my recollection, being involved with this, as I mentioned to you, 75% of the, of the rates here, the employer rates, are to pay for the debt. They said that's across all four pensions. If you looked at them individually, the teacher fund is the worst funded, and 80% of that rate is to pay for the debt. They anticipate it might level off 24, 25.
And Jack, that went up because their anticipated return on the investment was significantly higher than the actual. Anticipated was higher than actual.
The assumed rate of return.
So when they got it, they were kind of like, oh, expletive, we didn't make what we thought we did. Now we have to make it up somewhere else.
Yeah, so there's two, there's two things. They lowered their assumed rate of return from seven down to 6.75, and then the rate that they had didn't come in. I think the assumed rate of return hit 1.1%, so it was significantly lower.
The rate of return was 1%?
1.1, yep. It's on their website. Yeah.
That's how anyone did that decision.
So.
That's way below what the reasonable prudent investor return was this past year, so that's concerning.
Well, I would anticipate that every two years for at least the next budget cycle or two budget cycles at the state level. For us, you know, once this rate's set, it's set for two years unless there's some anomaly, and that's happened before where they have gone in and adjusted it, but-
Right, no, I, I get it.
This will be a significant issue, without a doubt.
I'm just surprised at 1.1.
So I'll move over to the health now to give you an idea of a census. In '21, which is our current year, this is a snapshot of what we had in the budget for '22. There's the numbers, or as they tell us, the number of members in the plan, and then that's the difference between '21 and '22. Now, existing means those that we grandfathered, who we did not change when we negotiated the new deductible plan, we gave those that were on the plan one rate, and anybody who was about to come into the district a different rate. So there are what you call new. Existing are ones that are grandfathered and had a, we make a higher contribution for those. The ones that are new are contributions of a little lower. And then your, your, people that are other, they get classified because they may have some special combination to where maybe they're ineligible for a single plan, but they buy up to a two-person or a family plan and pay that difference. That's why they're other.
Can you send around a summary or make available a summary of what's in our plan and what the cost sharing is?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that?
I just wanted to know if we could get a summary of what our plan is, who it's through, what the adoptables are, that type of thing.
Thank you.
So here's the history of what we've budgeted back to 2012, and the bottom corner is the history of past premiums for payment, premium holidays that they call it against the plan. This is a snapshot of the rates by plan. And again, the $551,000 increase or 5.54. The one thing that's important to note is that the district pays the higher of the two rates. There's a monthly billing rate, and that's what we, the district pays. So a monthly single plan, and the only plan we offer is the consumer-driven plan, that's the, called the yellow open access with choice. That's the only plan we offer to active employees. And that's $863 or $10,356 a year. Two-person is 1726 or $20,712 a year. And the family plan is $2,330 a month or $27,960. And that's what the district pays, pays its portion of those rates. Then you have the-
Hey, Jack, we're having a hard time hearing you back here.
How about now? Is that better?
It's a little bit better. I think you probably have to get close to the mic.
Would it be better if I took that off?
Yeah, that's-
Okay, maybe I'm muffled.
I'm good with it.
So with the employee contributions, they're based on the monthly effective rate. And when you look down the bottom there, you see that the single, if we go on the low end and the high end, and this is based on what the contributions would be. So we have contributions as much as employee pays as much as 5% or as little as 5%, but as much as 20%. So they would pay $461.70 for the year or $1,934.40 for the year for that single plan that's $10,356. Again, depending on where they fall at in their collective bargaining agreement or what they have for a contract is unaffiliated. Two-person, $967.20 or as high as $3868.80. And for a family plan, $1305.60 or as much as $55.22. That's your range.
Can you explain the difference between the 9.9 million budget and the 9 million actual for '21?
So if I'm looking, you're talking about on the-
Budget history?
Yep. So let me first say this. That should say FY '20 actual because there's no way we spent all the medical six months into the school year. That's where I goofed up. I should have had that as the first column, then FY '21 budget, and then FY '22. And I realize it's sitting here. That's what I always hate when I, when I do that. But that would be the actual that we spent last year for, for health.
Nine million?
No, 8,306.
Okay.
What we budgeted was 9,945, which is what you see up there, and then this year, we're budgeting 10,496. And the thing you have to understand about the actuals from last year is that there was a significant drop in the activity on everything. Because we went from looking at about a $70,000 loss in dental to a $46,000 gain in dental because everything just stopped.
I'm just, our projected for '21, and maybe I should clarify what our fiscal year is?
We're in FY '21.
We're in FY, when does it end?
June 30.
Okay. So our projected for '21 is $9 million?
Right.
Is that still accurate?
For the best that we can, yep.
So then we have a 26% increase in '22?
Well, you have to take the premium holiday and subtract that out. Because the premium holiday is the difference between the monthly billing rate and the effective rate that sets those rates. So what we do is we don't budget the premium holiday. We put it all into the health. So if you add that 700 and some thousand dollars to that nine million, that's 9.7 million.
But the premium holiday is essentially saying we overpaid our healthcare premiums.
From the year before, correct.
So are we budgeting to overpay our healthcare premiums next year? Or this is just a one-time because '20 was so low?
Every year, there are one-times. So we don't know. I mean, you can see from the history, it varies from 1.9 million to a low number. But what I do is when I factor in what the actual claims are, if they're savings, that's just what the actual, what we actually spent, the difference goes into the unassigned fund balance. So I'm factoring in that 2.4 million that you see at the bottom of the whole budget.
Yeah.
I'm anticipating there's going to be savings in health. So that's where I put it. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm going to move on to the next slide, which I think is, yep, this is the trend data that we got from our consultants that help us. And as you can see, we're looking at about a 4.2% for our, our yellow plan. And this is just the history. Last year, 5.1, the year before, 0. When you look at the employees in 1920, they had a 3.5% decrease, 5.1% increase, 4.7% increase. And then this telling you a little bit, some of the reasons and the rationale of why these are increasing. We do pay a contract with a company called Barcello. Started back, used to be IPG, and they merged. And they've been very helpful in us managing our healthcare claims. Still can't? I don't know, I don't know what more to do with these mics, to be honest.
Can't hear you, Jack.
Be loud.
Yeah.
Just be loud.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
No?
This is not, can, maybe he needs to turn, I'm right in this thing. Can you turn it up?
You want to try?
Battery's up there. Let's come to juice it up in there.
What color are you?
Kick it a notch. I'm a, oh, it's like a gray or bluish gray. It's up? All right. That better? No? Eh, yeah? All right, well, I'll, I'll do, I'll do the best I can. So now I'm going to move on to our early retirees. So the district, like I mentioned to you before, contributes 50 to 65% towards the cost of certain medical plan. Right now, we're projecting to have 38 retirees next year. And we're going to maintain the budget at about the same. Again, that's just a guesstimate. We go based on the retirees we have now, but sometimes we don't know till this June how many people actually leave and, and take advantage of that benefit. For the dental plan, here we show you how many were on the plan and, how many we had planned for in '21 and how many we planned for in '22 and what those differences are. And then the history of the claims. Again, as I mentioned, the workers' comp, we got a not-to-exceed notice. And based on that not-to-exceed, they have given us a price that's the same as the current year. Now, this year, in, I think it was June or July, they awarded us a $55,000 premium holiday. You know, they give us a not-to-exceed in November, and then we don't know sometimes till later. Now with the health, they tell us that. But with the workers' comp, we don't get told that from Primex. And there's a history of those different premium holidays. This is a copy of the notice that I get, October, November. And as you can see, the member rate, $387,580 for current year, they're proposing the same amount. But you see what the change in the payroll is, and you see that there's no increase in that premium. For unemployment, this year, we had budgeted 60. We proposed dropping that by $10,000 to 50. So far, we have had no claims. And then as I mentioned, the life and ADD, we're in the second year, so that premium is, was proposed to be the same. So we have an estimate of $146,339. Any questions?
Jack? When we budget a certain amount of money for unemployment and just workers' comp, I guess anything in general, and we don't meet, the actual is less. Do we, does that money just roll over to the next year and remain in the fund? Or do we reallocate it?
You have to allocate it. So what happens is you see, and if you go to the last page in either one of these, and you go to the bottom of the FY '22 budget, you'll see a number of $2,400,000 in the FY '22 column, okay? Notice, if you go to the FY '21 budget column, there was $2,103,325. That's what we budgeted, that's what we had anticipated to have in money that would be not used. And that's based on when we start doing this budget in October, okay? So I'm anticipating to carry that savings forward. So that's encumbered. Anything over and above that, you as a board need to take action. If I don't bring anything for you, before you, and there's extra money, like there was last June, it all goes back to the tax rate. So what would that mean? So say we didn't come to you in June, when we had about 4.3 million, and we had projected 2.1. And that all went back to the tax rate. If you needed that money, you would have had to raise that plus what you have to raise this year. So when you look at $635,000 for every 1%, that's about 4% you would have gave back. So if you had to come back and get your, what are you, 2.97 now, plus four, people would be looking at almost a 7% increase. That's what I think you may see statewide, a lot of these rates being, because they don't have authority, you guys do, to be able to manage that. And they'll see those rates drop significantly on a one-off. It's very concerning. And that's what we try, that's what we try to do. And that's why we put it into the, into the trust funds. It looked good for our bond rating, which helped us get a great rate for our refunding. It all comes together. It's just, how do we move all the levers if we do the right thing, you know, to benefit the community overall? But I can't do anything with it. You need to take that action. But if we don't, it just goes to the rate and reduces taxes. Thank you. You're welcome.
Jack?
Yeah.
Going back to the early retiree health benefits, you have us forecast in going up by about 7.5% after a fairly long trend of going down. Is that an increase in the number of people that are in there or an increase in the cost of the, the healthcare benefit?
For, for who? I'm sorry.
Looking at the early retirees. When you look at going 2019 to 2020 projected, it's going up after a fairly long trend of going down. I'm just asking, why is that going up? Is that because?
You mean right here?
Yep. Yeah. Is that an increase in the number of people involved? Is it an increase in the cost and the reduction of the people? I mean, these are people who could retire anytime from roughly, when they could retire at 53 under our current contract, and then we cover up until 65. Are people on or?
It's a combination of rate increase or people adjusting plans. Because remember, they can do a single or two-person, and we have had that. But most of that is because of the rate increase. Because these rates apply to them as well, these rate increases.
Okay. Okay. So that could be retirees that are 55 and they were single, but now they're going to a family plan.
Two-person, or they go from a two-person. Yeah, this wouldn't count if it was a buy-up, because we parse them out. If it's a buy-up, they pay that, so that's a liability that gets collected from them. Most of them have it all coming out of their pension. So it will never pass through to us. And I believe school care does those collections if they're paying on their own, not us.
Okay. Thank you.
Jack?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Does the district have an incentive for people not? And they could be covered through their spouse or are young enough to have it through their parents?
Yeah, depending on the group, it can range from 700 to 1,000 to 1,400. I think that's, that might be the highest we do, yeah.
I'm just curious.
Not every group has declination. But like for the unaffiliated, we don't have any of that for unaffiliated, so. Let me get down to where I was. Okay. So again, this information is all posted on the web. I don't know, the person that posted it was not in today, but I did email it. I don't know if she got to post the work session for tonight. But we'll post the capital facilities one probably either tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday morning after Matt and I review it. The budget sheets you have will be posted right here. Now I'm realizing that needs to be moved over a column. And then the document, as I mentioned, that I put together, I just need, with the website down and stuff, I need a little bit more time putting this together. But this has all the plan designs, the collective bargaining agreement summaries, a lot of various different documents, as well as all of this is in there. Usually, it's only the budget, the budget comparison. But I wanted you to at least get the, the bulk of what is in this budget to you, so you can spend time picking it apart and asking any questions that you might have. So this is that document that's almost 200 pages. Again, they know who to reach out if they got quarrels. If they got questions, feel free to send them my way. But if they have some issues, these are your friends.
Don't call me.
And then these are the posts, probably either tonight or in the morning. And we'll get them out, and I'll create the ones for the rest of these meetings. I think you have the ones for both meetings this week. And then this is the balance of the schedule. So again, on the 10th, we have capital facilities and debt service. And then you see the rest of those meetings. I will also note that on March 1st, which I'll add in there, that is your monthly board meeting. So we will, as we get closer, we'll have to address that because if these meetings are posted here, I don't think we're going to leave here and go up there. So we'll work with the high school to make sure, because we have some safety stuff happening in that room that, that's supposed to start that week, but we're trying to defer that until after you, after you get through your meeting. And then as I mentioned, the high school and CRTC enrollments, that is usually done after you post a budget. Just because you post it doesn't mean you can't fix it, but you need at least, I need to post that 10 days prior, no fewer than 10 days prior than the public meetings, okay? And it's our hope that you'll finalize a budget on March 24th. But you have a little time. Okay? Yes?
Can we get a list of all positions in the district?
Mm-hmm. Yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
A list of all the positions in the district, you know, to understand what goes with the salary. And I don't mean to be obtuse on the health insurance.
Yep.
But it sounds like we spent nine mil, we're expecting to spend $9 million this year. So if we're looking at what our base is, that is a 26% increase. Are we budgeting for a lapse in health insurance next year? Or are we expecting a 26% increase?
I'm only, I am budgeting to whatever their contribution is and whoever we anticipate to be on a plan. That's actual numbers. What comes in, whether people resign, don't take health, I have no way of, I have no way of knowing.
So.
I see what you're saying.
Do you see what I'm saying? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know.
So our budgeted rate is, is significantly higher than we paid last year. We're paying this year. But we're saying it's a 5.4% increase. It doesn't look like a 5.4% increase to me if you're looking at what we actually spent. So I'm trying to understand what's driving that. And part of it is I don't know enough about the mechanics of our plan, maybe, but.
So Jack, does our expenditures include not only a flat insurance rate, but also a copay or another type of additional amount?
There's a.
So people didn't go to the doctor this year because of the COVID situation? And so we're kind of low from what we budgeted, but we're guessing that they're going to go back and make up for this year? Or go back at what we expect them to do this, next year? Or what's our, what is your basis? Because I understand we budgeted assuming people are all going to go to the doctor, and then came March or April, and they said, oh, no, you're not getting your knee replaced this year because we're not doing elective surgeries or any of that kind of stuff. We're postponing that. And so our costs were lower. But next year, are we looking at people, are you, when your, your assumption, and ask, and you can tell me if I'm totally off-base here, but is your assumption that everyone will go back to their normal rate of visiting doctors and getting procedures and things done? Or a normal plus what we didn't do this year? Or what is your, what is your basis of assumptions?
There's no assumption. It's bodies. That's what it is. It's pure bodies. It's taking who's on health now, assuming they're going to stay. And then you have a 4.7% increase in the rate. Then you have open positions. And whenever you have an open position, we always budget a family plan for that person, because we don't know. And that's it. So because actuals are coming in lower, at 20, if it's 26% more, I'm only comparing budget to budget, not actual to a budget.
So, so Jack, I think what might help is what did you budget last year? You didn't, you came in much lower than what you budgeted. So I think that's, that's the confusion, because you, you, you didn't, you anticipated a certain amount. That did not materialize, so you only spent eight whatever million, whatever it was. But this year, when you do the actuals for everybody, every count, right? Every anticipated, it's higher than what might come in next year. Because you may hire somebody that didn't need a family, they only needed a single. Or quite frankly, to follow Danielle, they may say, I'm going to opt for the 1,400 buyout.
Right.
But we don't know that today. That's why I'm saying, if you compare last year's, what did you ask for? And this year's, what did you ask for?
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, we talked about that last week.
Yeah, so I think, Jack, what you're saying is this is how many people we have that we anticipate working for us, and they're all going to take a family plan.
Right.
Okay, so you budget conservatively.
If it's an open position, yes. So if you hired somebody this year on a single plan, you know, you were teachers, they get married, they have a kid, they go single to a family, we're eating that difference.
Right.
Because we didn't budget for it. We only budgeted them at a single if they happen to be two years into the district. So it's just, it, this becomes what's called ins and outs. And the reason why you were significantly higher was when everything shut down, March 13th, the claims stopped, so we didn't have as much to pay. So part of, where do you think that 2.4 million extra came from? A lot of it was in health, because the benefits didn't get spent. What do we do with that money? We put it in the health risk reserve. What am I doing with this year? I'm pulling it out to offset this increase. That's what I'm doing.
So you're saying this isn't just conservative budgeting based on family plan. It's conservative budget based on, on whatever plan, but also the contributions we pay for actual procedures that are done. but also the contributions we pay for actual procedures that are done?
No, we pay, we pay a premium based on the bodies that are in the plan.
Okay, so you're saying we get a rebate of, we get rebates if people don't go to the hospital?
Right, so when you have that, then you have the premium holiday.
Right, that's the premium holiday, that's the savings that the insurance company gives back to us because we didn't have the expected level of claims.
Correct.
But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jack, what you do is you take the number of employees and you say, okay, this is how many warm bodies we have that are, that we are gonna potentially cover, times, this is the premium, and that's where this number comes from.
That's where that ten thousand four ninety-six comes from, that's it. Each one of these are actually what we budgeted by year, and then this is what it came in.
Right.
Obviously, you see that big difference right now, and it's just a projection running out because we're always in arrears, so we've paid January, February is not yet, so you still got February, March, April, May. And all we do is take whatever the last month was and run it out. Now, you could start hitting April, May, June, and you'll see a spike in the claims because people are like getting ready to be summer, they have April break, and they may have elective surgery. So it's just a guess.
But are we paying, are we self-funded?
No.
So we're not paying based on claims? I mean, that medical experience obviously impacts our rates, but we got rates from school care?
Correct.
For next year.
Yep, which is, I don't know, right there, that's the rate sheet.
Okay, and that's the twenty-one, twenty-two rates?
Yep, yep. And this is there, it tells you right on the bottom what your premium holiday is. And that is to pick up the difference between the monthly billing rate and the effective rate. Because that is what we pay, and this is what the employee pays.
I'm sorry, so we have a premium holiday for next year built in already?
Correct. They tell you right here, that's, that's right there, seven thirty-five, and on the other thing, I showed you all the history. And what that money is used, that's to pay the difference between what their, what the monthly billing rate is and what this thing actually comes in at.
Because you, you were paying at a family rate, even though some people aren't using the family rate?
Well, remember, as we said, there, there's certain people that you may not have had the, the number of claims, or we didn't have that much activity, or we didn't hire people that left in March. We didn't have as much activity going on, so it may not have needed what that difference was to make up, to make it up. See what I'm saying?
So when you budgeted these based on the number of bodies, you've taken out the four that we are anticipating losing, the two elementary, the two middle.
Right.
And added a couple of the others, like the SAP people?
Right, well, they're contracted service, but your ELO will now jump into a benefits eligible because at point six, they may not have been, but it may hit point eight oh or higher, they may now be benefits eligible.
So it's relatively the same because even though we're losing a couple of positions, we might be adding a couple, and that makes the numbers more even. Closer.
Right.
Okay.
But you're still gonna have your ones that, depending on where they are in their plan this year, I think who was it, Kathleen was talking about the number of ones that now probably have babies. So that will, if it's their first, now that's gonna jump from a two-person to a family plan.
So we budget based on the guaranteed rate and not the effective rate?
Correct.
And why do we do that?
Because that is where we wanna be conservative, because it's what the employees pay this. If I budget to this and I'm paying this, I'm already shorting my budget.
So you wanna, you're basically building in a cushion if people change plans?
That's correct.
By using the guaranteed monthly rate? And what is the historic cushion that we've needed in terms of how many employees in a year switch to a higher level plan? Do we know?
Well, you can see the difference right here.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I mean, you're looking.
Here, it looks like between three hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand a year, other than.
And typically, that's what we, when I, when I look at the ins and outs to come up with my unassigned fund balance, I go through all these, the salaries, we sit down, we go through line by line and try to guess what should it be. But typically, the medical should be between three and five. And that's why I said last year's anomaly, by having all that extra money, which when you go to the twenty-fifth shows what we put away, we did that to try to keep it stable. Now, the other question I've asked to, to school care is, could I anticipate a second premium holiday because of the lack of claims? And they said likely not, because they carried four million dollars forward to cover COVID claims, and December alone was a million dollars. So it's highly unlikely that that, there will be a second one. I said, do I anticipate a higher increase for the year after that? Too early to tell.
So essentially, we normally run around a four and a half to five percent cushion that you put in there just in case of people claims. But last year, or forecast for this year, anticipated, we don't know what this year is. It just seems like it's, you know, nine hundred thousand dollars, and that's just, you're anticipating that to be just a one-time anomaly because of the COVID year?
Oh, I, I, I think you're looking at between last year, this year, and the year after, all of it's gonna need some time to equalize.
In other words.
Because what I'm worried about is, we have this run out, that's why I'm taking the money out of the reserve to, to beat this increase. But when I'm, it's a little bit of a risk, but the concern is that there's gonna be pent-up demand, and then all of a sudden, the claims are really gonna jump.
So you're concerned that we're down nine hundred thousand in forecast claims or costs because of claims, but that instead of, so that we're basically ten percent instead of four and a half percent, you're concerned that next year would jump up even more? And that would be zero percent cushion, and we may need more. What Pam's asking is, why aren't we readjusting nine nine four five down to nine oh five oh?
Or the five point four seven, but if claims, if people suddenly went to the doctor a lot more than we were expecting in twenty-two, would that affect our rates?
Yes.
Okay, so our rates are claim adjusted during the year?
You mean for all of next year, I'm sorry, no. If they do it, we'll see it in twenty-three.
Twenty-three, so our rates for next year are set regardless?
I don't know.
So our rates for next year are set regardless?
Is anybody tuned into? But if we're not, if we're just on here, I don't think we get.
Well, here's the other piece that you're not seeing. I'm also pulling seven hundred thousand dollars from your reserve to make up that impact. So really, the net increase is zero. I'm actually going a little bit more because I'm pulling seven hundred versus five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar increase.
I, I get that, but I think that's great, I just wonder if we're over budgeting. Like, it feels like we're over budgeting in this category, but I haven't.
I mean, right now, it might because again, it's all, I'm trying to be conservative, make sure we have enough to be able to take care of an off-spike. If I drop down to that, then I'm gonna make a bigger increase in a future year. All I'm trying to do is keep stability, hence why I pulled seven hundred out. So when you ever.
We know closer to whether or not this is a one-time anomaly, we'll be towards.
October, yeah. And by then, you'll be either putting the money away, or we'll use it to lower the budget. Right. But, you know, you pull too much out and go too low, it just means, so you come in with a nine percent increase the following year, now you gotta make that up. And I'm just trying to keep something that's moving along.
So how much of that ten, and that might be a good decision, but how much of that ten point five is sort of building a reserve for a future year? Is it seven hundred and thirty-five thousand that we're not gonna spend?
We don't know because we got, we pay the monthly guaranteed rate, so I, I don't know. And if you look at the history, we've been pretty accurate between three to five. Because this is, I would say we're, we're trending pretty good. I think if we were to jump down to that, it would be more conservative. But again, if I take seven hundred out of that number, I'm down to nine point seven. So, and again, I still got six more months left of this plan, plus you got trailing claims of July and August. So.
But claims don't matter, do they, for our rates for twenty-two?
Well, every month when we get that bill, it depends on who's on it, who moved, who, what did they do?
Our numbers matter, but not what they're doing.
Right. The claims matter in the future when it does hit your rates, correct.
So if this was a major, right now, if we did come in a lot lower, that's an adjustment we could, we would make or determined to make in October.
And what that adjustment may mean is that you're not gonna pull your money out of your trust. That's what you adjust, because whether I pull it out of taxes or I pull it out of your reserve, it's just balancing it. So really, that's, if I net it out, you're at nine point seven in here. Because I'm pulling seven hundred thousand out of that reserve. Does that make sense? I'm pulling out money that you put away last year, just trying to equalize it.
Yeah, I understand, we're, we're still on an anomaly this year related to medical and COVID, and we don't know what's gonna happen for the remainder of this year.
Right.
Or next year.
Anything else? I will post a fixed one of this that has the columns in the right place and labeled correctly, and then I will print them as well, and you'll have them for Wednesday's meeting, or if you want them sooner, you can pick them up. But. Here's where we are so far. I'm all set.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
You know that, so we're done with the budget piece, but before we adjourn, Kathleen's gonna make.
Yes, I, I anticipated that. So for this meeting, we had asked Kathleen to pull together some information relative to the, the Harwood case, I believe, and, and with regards to, to reference and hiring practices, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Dawn has taken a minute to pass out some information that I put together for you, just a timeline. One of the questions that has come to our attention is, what's the process for hiring? What, what were there steps missed, were there, you know, did, did the district not do its due diligence in terms of vetting a potential teacher? So I, I wanna run through the timeline, if that's okay with you, and then I'll answer any questions you might have that have come up and that you've had, you've heard from constituents relative to the case. So it started out in April, on April twentieth. Two administrators, five teachers in a, in a team approach interviewed the candidate on April twentieth. Following that, they did reference checks, and so in those reference checks, we had letters, written letters, which are required by the process, and there was six or seven letters in the file that were submitted, and it also was required that they do three telephone conferences so that they talk live with someone, and they did that. They talked to one person at Southern New Hampshire University. They also talked to two people over at Farmington High School, Farmington principal and a, a teacher at the school. The information that we received written from, the written correspondence were teachers, students, and the department chair at Southern New Hampshire University who wrote a letter of reference for him. This, after all of that was done and the recommendations were done, they then, a candidate is then forwarded to the superintendent. In this case, they, that candidate was interviewed by superintendent, interim superintendent Frank Bass. I verified that today with some emails that went back and forth, so I know that that, that happened. Some, I was asked today by someone, how do I know these things really happen? Well, they really happened because I've had evidence and emails to verify these things, so just in case anyone asks. Once that was done and after Dr. Bass interviewed, that, the position was brought forward, as you know, Larry, sitting right behind me, brings forward nominations to you, and you are the body, you are the only body, by the way, that elects teachers, and you did that on May fourth at your May meeting. Again, we found that in the minutes from May, and also the agenda for May. Once that's done, before anything else is done, then begins the onboarding, if you will. The onboarding entails the, the process around the summary of, you know, the contract costs, all of the plans, health insurance and life insurance, and all the fingerprinting. That fingerprinting at the time, remember now, back then, they were not doing fingerprinting in, in April and May because the state police just weren't doing it. No one was real sure how safe they could be at that point. However, I want you to know that once that opened, Mr. Howard had fingerprints submitted on August seventh, and they all, they were, they were fine. The only person that gets those reports are the superintendent, I receive those reports. They verify state police checks as well as FBI. Once I look at those reports, if there's any problem, then the superintendent would immediately reach out to Larry, our HR director, and, you know, take whatever actions we need to. In the case of New Hampshire, you are not eligible to teach, you're not eligible by law to, if you have a felony. So obviously, there was none of that in his criminal record check, so. And during that time, in May, Mr. Harwood was also interviewed and several times relative to certification, going over his certification, making sure that he had the right, he was on an alt-four plan, and he had the right response to the plan, which is required by the State Department, Department of Education around certification. He worked on that plan, submitted that plan to the Department of Ed, and was awarded certification by the Department of Ed. He began his tenure here in the district on August twenty-sixth. And then I kind of filled in the rest of the timeline for you. The notification to, once we were notified about the situation, we notified the police on December sixteenth, which is the same date that we were alerted to the situation. On December eighteenth, he was placed on paid administrative leave, both by email as well as certified mail. I released a press, to, a press release to the families on December twenty-first. But knowing that there was some issues, I asked Mr. Prince to call over to Southern New Hampshire University, and he has not received any response from them. So I don't, we don't know anymore about that. At that point, I put in on, let's see, January twentieth, he received an email as well as a certified letter on January twentieth, once we finished our investigation. We did not wait for the police to finalize theirs. Gotta remember. We did not wait for the police to finalize theirs. Gotta remember now, there's two parts to this. One is, what violations were there to the code of ethics, the code of conduct, and your district policies? That's what we looked at. The police look at the, any crimes that were committed, so we separated those two out. And I, I moved forward to put him on unpaid administrative leave, and then requesting notification and indicating that if I didn't receive it, he would be, I would recommend termination. So Mr. Harwood resigned. Mr. Prince acknowledged the letter, and I released that information on February fourth to the community. That kinda is a timeline, and all the steps that were taken, I, I reviewed the personnel file. I reviewed any documentation that we had, and feel that we, the district, did the, took the appropriate steps relative to his hiring here in the district. I'll be happy to answer any questions that, you know, that you have, and I know you've had some.
Well, yeah, it's not a question so much as a clarification here. So in my twenty-one years in the district, and my nine years on the board, the school board's process for accepting Mr. Prince's nominations have never included any close questioning or clarifications on the part of the district. By the time they come to us, everything that needs to be done to make sure they're allowed to teach has been done. We wouldn't go ahead and say, yes, Mr. Harwood can teach here, if we didn't know. Now, in this case, it's different, because the background, the fingerprinting and such wasn't happening. But I know that there's, people are looking for places that we screwed up. This is what people wanna see, or hear, or find. Where did we goof that he could come teach here? And that comes from all of the Howie Lee Young stuff. I'm sort of reiterating what's out there, and what people are saying.
I understand.
So, so my response, where I questioned about, you know, how does the school board operate on this? We've never, ever questioned the administration as to, has every step been taken? Because that would, that's several, several staff members every year, or even every meeting. People are being recommended for hiring all the time. Somebody resigns, or leaves, somebody's replaced, somebody has a leave of absence, somebody gets sick, whatever it is. So the process by which we approved Mr. Harwood was no different than it was for any other teacher at that meeting, or any meeting prior or post.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just doing this, because we're on TV here, and, and the public needs to know that there wasn't any big giant red flag that we all should have somehow seen at a meeting to approve his hiring.
You, you had no red flags that would cause you to not fulfill the obligation of a board to elect a new teacher? That is the responsibility that all of the parties have, starting from that team of, team, interview team, all the way up through this, this office, the central office, including the work that Mr. Prince does as HR director, that Donna does around certification, that the superintendent does around interviews, and all of the steps in place. There were no red flags. You know, I looked at your procedures as they relate to other districts that I have worked in, and other, you know, other districts, basically, and this follows the protocols that are required. And you require those. I mean, it's clear that there are gonna be three, at least three phone calls, and, and written testimony also. So, you, you know, it's very clear. And all the steps were, were taken and executed by the staff in order to do that, and there were no red flags.
My next. I'm, I'm not quite done, David, just a minute.
Hold on, Dave, I'll recognize you in a minute.
So the next issue would be, how did we, we called SNU, and spoke to someone at SNU. But then SNU goes ahead and says to the world that no one ever called, and they never would have. So, so my question is, do we need to, do we need to insert, and this isn't the time to answer it, but I'm gonna throw it out here. Maybe as a district, there was somebody else at SNU we should have called, that could have, that could have, we have this ambiguous thing, where SNU is claiming one thing, which is contrary to what we say we did. So the person we called at SNU may not have known, because again, personnel issues are private. Not every teacher would know the details of, of every personnel issue, because they're personnel issues. So could we have called someone else that could have prevented his hiring? And is this something we need to now add into our process of hiring? Do we, do we have to now, on everyone that applies here, forever, do we need to call the personnel offices of those places? These are things I anticipate coming up, so I'm not trying to be troublesome here. I'm looking at the discrepancies between what SNU is saying to the world and what we did. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I.
There may not be an answer.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you right now.
Right, and I'm not looking for one.
My biggest issue is, is that Southern New Hampshire University is a private institution, and their obligation to provide that information to anybody, when Mr. Prince calls, or I, I call, I don't know. My, my concern here, and I don't disagree with what you said, Barb. My concern is, and I made calls this morning to the Department of Ed, because what is the obligation for a private school like this, Southern New Hampshire University? It could be anybody else. It could be Riviera, it could be any private school in, in the state. What are the obligations that they have, just like we have in reporting to the Department of Ed and the police? If the, the SNU believed that he was fired, and that he should never teach, that got nowhere. Because remember, he left SNU as an adjunct professor, and went to Farmington. Gotta remember that now.
Right.
And so that was his public school experience, was Farmington. And I also reached out to the superintendent in Farmington, and I talked to her, I've talked to her on two occasions. And they had absolutely no idea. So the question I had to the department is, what do we need to do now to prevent this from happening? How do we get that kind of information from, you know, from the collegiate level? And so that we know the circumstances.
And to prevent them from being disingenuous. Well, we had no idea, we'd never not, well, okay, but he made it into two districts.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, first, we'll, Ms. Hastings, and then Mr. Parker. So, Ms. Hastings.
Thank you, Kathleen.
I just, I wanna say thank you for this timeline. It is incredibly helpful.
Um, can you?
Sorry.
Thanks.
Thank you for the timeline. It is very, very helpful. I have believed all along that you've handled this situation very well, been very transparent with it. My concern is obviously that in the last couple of years, we have put students in harm's way with adults that have been hired at least three times. Not on purpose, and, and not ever trying to hurt anyone. That's never been the intention of anybody that I believe has ever worked for Concord schools. But we've gotta make sure that we, we aren't having these things happen continuously, which unfortunately, it does seem to be happening.
Right, I, I, they are, the situations are a little bit different.
They are different, yet.
But this last situation did not involve, at least to this point that we know of, involve any of our high school students. Okay, I wanna be clear about that.
Right.
There were no students, to our knowledge, today, Monday, February eighth, that there were any students at the high school involved. And we did, before we finished our internal investigation, that was part of it. And making sure that we had anybody, and, and I know for a fact that Karen, again, did that part of the investigation, and, and made sure we didn't have any. But I wanna be careful, because you never know, and something could come up. So I'm, I'm saying that meaning as of today.
Absolutely.
And I, I believe that the, the police are still investigating. You're right, I don't want anything like this to happen. I said this today, I did a, a piece on MUR this, this afternoon, and I said our priority is the safety of our students, and we have to take every single effort we can to avoid these kinds of conflicts, so.
So I guess one of my questions would be, the high school administrators that did the background checks, that spoke with the chair of SNU, do we have any written report on that?
We have, we have the written statement from the administrators at the high school about all the steps they took, the people that were involved in the interviewing, when they interviewed, all the data, his strengths, his weaknesses. But they also included, in the packet that I reviewed, was all the written letters. The written was from the department chair. The phone call was from another person, teacher, professor at the school.
Who may or may not have been aware of.
Right, my feeling is, is that the reason why we didn't get any feedback, I suspect they had no idea. Personnel matter, it was kept, it was taken care of, obviously, from what SNU is saying, only that I hear on the, on the TV, that he was, was let go. I don't know any more than that.
So we contacted the department chair before we ever hired or recommended hiring?
I wanna be clear about this, I don't want any confusion. There were two people from Southern New Hampshire University that, that we had testimony from. One was written from the department chair. The second was a telephone conversation with a, a doctor, professor at the university.
Okay, so we did too. All right, Mr. Parker?
Yeah, Kathleen, I, I, thank you, and I agree with what pretty much everyone's saying. I mean, you did incredible due diligence when, when it came to interviewing, and when it came to our response. And I, I'm, I, I'm not critical of that. The thing that makes me wonder is that we still had someone that snuck through the system, and performed these, you know, behaved this way. And it just makes me wonder, you know, how does this happen? With social media the way it is, are we missing something? Is this unique to us? Is this, I mean, because basically, we, you know, we have to remember, our private institutions are just like us. They care deeply about kids and families. The president of SNU educates these kids in, in some of the private schools in New York, you know, in Manchester. So I think these are our colleagues, and I just, you know, as, as hard as it is to go through all of what we've gone through, and gone, and, and within this case in particular, all the steps that you took in terms of hiring, and the steps you took to reconstitute what happened, it just seems to me it still happened. So what are we missing? And is there something beyond what we're doing? I don't have an answer. But, you know, if I might, if I might, what's, what, what comes out in the public is that, there they go again. You know, they don't look at the details, they don't look at it. Wouldn't it be nice if we said, okay, we know we did everything, but we also went one step further. We're really trying to figure a way, that maybe, um, we haven't figured out yet. How, how do we not, how do we make sure this doesn't happen again? So that's just, that's just, again, my hope, that there's gotta be a solution, because we did so much good due diligence. And Kathleen, thanks so much for responding to telling us all that was done, but I still wonder.
Yeah, Dave, I asked that question, and I've asked that question for many years, Dave, in my career, and you know that. My career is long. This is not the first time that this situation has come. And you have to say to yourself, why? I posed that question to the, the, over at the Department of Ed, to the investigator for teacher misconduct. And his answer is always the same. Calls me Murph, by the way. And he says, Murph, he said, you're in a business where there are kids, and it unfortunately attracts people, and you don't always know it, and they come, and they work there. And it might be the, it, it, we've seen it in our history, right, the church. Remember, it could never be a priest, never, never could it be a priest, as, as, as the mother and father would say to the, to the son. Or to the Boys and Girls Club, or to a, a, a school institution, or to the playground. I, 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 that's a terrible thing for me to be saying now, because it just doesn't set well with me, but it's the truth. And in my experience, that's what's happened. And, and unfortunately, it, it, again, reared its ugly head. And I, I agree with you, Dave, there's gotta be another piece to that. So I'm pledging to work with the Department of Ed, both, I'm attorney, the attorney for the attorney Fenton, as well as Rich Farrell, the investigator, to come up with some ideas about how we can go to the next level. But there's times, Dave, that I don't know everybody's personal history, and I don't know their personal addictions. And I, I, it's the world of work, and in the world of work, we see a lot of different people, and. It's not a great answer.
Also ought to think about reaching out to the actual private schools themselves, and creating a, a, a bond, somehow, a relationship, so that, that, you know, they're seeing us as, as colleagues, and problem solvers together. They may have ideas coming from the private side of things that we don't see, or we don't know. So I, I, I think we're not an island, as you know, look at what St. Paul's schools call us. And all schools go through, but we, we, we can't, you know, we can't look at them as someone else. They're us, and they're educating kids.
Well, SNU needs to.
And all jurisdictions are different, and the, and the regulations are different. But I think bringing those parties together might be a really good start.
Thank you, Dave, and now Gina, then Ms. Walsh, and then Mr. Weinberg, and then anybody else. So Ms. Cannon, go ahead.
So there are actually two things that occur to me. One, the background check only catches people who have been convicted. And if I read, if I have read the story correctly, and the stories, in fact, reflect reality, the student that this man was, I don't even know what the right verb is, but was over eighteen. So there was not a crime. So the fingerprints and the background checks will only pick up if someone's been convicted. Unfortunately, I've gotta agree with the investigator up at the DOE. I mean, we can't keep these people away from our kids. It's not, I don't believe it's physically possible. A lot of them are very, very effective chameleons. And I wanna say that I'm actually thrilled that this graduate of our high school did frankly what Anna Goble did. They said something, they stepped up, they stepped forward, and they said, wait a sec. And we really, I mean, that's the piece. If predators know that teachers, students, support staff, bus drivers, janitors, lunch people are gonna say something, then that makes the school an inhospitable place for them to prey on kids. We, we can't physically, I mean, we can't know what's in the hearts and minds of a fellow person. We'd like to think the best, but we can't know that. So the only way to do this is not so much keep them away, because we, we can't, they, they are us. They look like us, they sound like us, they, they are us. But to make it so that it is not an hospitable environment. And I wanna say that clearly, we've done some work on that, or this young man would not have stepped forward. So I do wanna say thank you to the administration for helping us change that.
And he purposely called and asked to speak to the assistant principal. He, he knew what he wanted to do, and he, and he, and he, and he did that.
Yeah. And I don't know that that would have happened in the past. So I do wanna say to the administration, thank you, we are making steps in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. Ms. Walsh?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, can I just confirm, we have the information about the delay in submitting fingerprints because the system was shut down. Did he start before we got his results back?
No, remember, he didn't start till August twenty-sixth.
I, I thought so, I just wanted to make sure. Second, do we know what the date of the letter of recommendation was from the department head at SNU?
I don't have it with me. I will get that for you, though. I don't have it right. I didn't bring his file down with me tonight. I will, that's a great question, I'll ask.
Thank you, and, and I, I think, I've hired people, I don't know what I would have done differently. That being said, you've, you're proposing, um, a lot of investment in modernizing our human resources system in this budget, and I think maybe to go back to the table and look and think about whether there are things we should be thinking about in terms of our hiring process and bringing in someone to help us think it through, and whether we can improve it. I don't know if we have policies on how old letters of recommendation can be, you know, um, or how current they have to be. But that might be, there might be somebody who could provide us some expertise in thinking about what we should be doing there.
Thank you.
Mr. Weinberg?
Um, I guess under, like, a legal framework, um, since personnel files can be private, would there, even if this individual wanted to say something about who was working at SNU, who knew why, um, Harwood was, um, like, or whatever the matter was, would they be legally allowed to?
Hmm, I'm not an.
No, they, they can, they can decline to offer a letter of recommendation. Frankly, the, the kiss of death is when you get a recommendation that says, Joe Jones was hired on June twelfth, Joe Jones left our employment on December fifteenth. Period. That's, that's as bad as you can say.
So what happens, though, in those cases, I had a case where I had a situation and nobody would talk to me. No one would talk to me, the school department, the, the police down in the, that school, that town. And so, um, that obviously put up a red flag, the red flag that somebody mentioned tonight. Um, and it wasn't until I, um, had legal assistance to file Freedom of Information Act did I get any information around this person. So let me tell you something, it's not as easy as everyone makes it out to be. Um, and, and, and Gina's right, you know, they have no obligation. And when you're talking about private institutions, and I don't disagree with what Dave said, you know, we need to reach out, we need to be partners in that, and we do work with SNU, we do work here in the district with SNU. Um, but I think that, um, you know, there isn't an obligation to, um, provide us with information, they don't have to.
Thank you.
Just one certification?
Um, certainly, Ms. Hastings.
Uh, even if he had gotten his fingerprints taken at a normal time or before the August time, nothing showed up in them.
Nothing showed up in him, right, it was clean.
So it wouldn't have mattered when he had them taken, because he hadn't been arrested, or because he hadn't been convicted?
He hadn't had any infractions, he had nothing in, in his, in his background that would indicate that he had any, committed any crimes, whether, uh, 'cause I get misdemeanors too, not just felonies, but I get reports on misdemeanors, you know, um, DWIs and, you know.
Because I don't know the law, if he, if SNU had a concern and had called the police, and he had been arrested or fingerprinted or whatever, or in, investigated, would that show up in a criminal background?
Um, no, it would only be if he actually was convicted of a crime, and that would be in the report, and that's what I get.
Okay.
Um, the, the convictions, not, um, if they don't have a, a conviction.
So there was no knowing?
Nothing, zero.
And, and to my understanding, SNU only just recently took down the references on their, uh, website to his awards and his, uh.
Yeah, when did those come down?
Uh, just within the last.
Just came down, all the awards that he won as a teacher and recognitions, and, uh, um, so those were visible, we, we knew that, um, and, but those just came down.
Yeah, they didn't take them down when they fired him.
No.
Okay, Ms. Higgins?
So my next question was, clearly, the department head knew nothing of why Mr. Harwood was let go. One would think, because they recommended him. So this is all stuff that still needs to be clarified by SNU. And my, my legal question, and this might, is, so SNU claims now that, you know, they did the right thing by letting him go because he was sexually inappropriate or whatever. But are they allowed to let their, the people that worked with him know, look, this is why he's no longer here, don't write him a recommendation? Can they say that? No?
No, because that's a personnel issue, it would be no different than that happening here in, in, in Concord. If I didn't renew, let's say I did not renew a teacher to the, to the board, or I was looking for termination. I don't tell anybody that, but we know that, and the essential personnel knows that. So hopefully, if this person applied out, they would, um, they, you know, they would call and get a, a reference. But, um, the principals would know, the administrators would know, of course, and our, in our central office staff. The other thing is, once somebody's convicted of a crime like that, and they're, and this, because certification is really key here. They pull the certification. Um, and so, um, I won't get into all the details there, but, um, that certification is the first thing you would wanna see, is, is this person certified?
Right.
And we get a list, um, every, every SAU in the state gets a list of all, um, people who have had their certification. And that, by the way, is a public list, I'm not telling any stories out, out here. Um, that, that's a list, I just received a new updated one, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And so we, we get an updated list of anyone who's lost their certification. So when I'm in, in the hiring, of course, I look at that list just to make sure that that person isn't, you know, trying to get a job without the correct credentials.
I'm asking these questions primarily because I, I have a real issue with people being accused of things they didn't do. And maybe I have my own personal reasons for feeling sensitive to this. I'm very, very devoted to this district, and if we screwed up, then we need to be honest and make it right. But if we didn't, and we're being blamed or accused of things we didn't do, then that bothers me as well.
Right, and I'm in a perfect position to give you that kind of information. I was not here, so I'm like an outsider, and I can look at your process and say, geez, you know, you should have done, or you didn't have enough references, but they did what I would have done, and, and any superintendent would have done relative to hiring. And, um, again, we don't always know everyone's background.
No.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon.
I only have sort of one question for clarification. Was he terminated from SNU, or was his contract not renewed?
I don't know that. All we know is what was in the press, and they made it very clear that they, I think they used the word fired, didn't they? They fired him. Um, the issue two is in his application, it indicates that he completed his contract.
Right, which would mean that they simply did not renew his contract.
I don't have the answer to that until I can get somebody to talk to us.
Yeah, right, but I just, I, I'm trying to make the differentiated point that there's any number of reasons why an adjunct faculty's contract would not be renewed.
Correct.
Um, and then I think I remember hearing, I, I mean, someone asked me, well, wasn't it a red flag that someone would come from a university to a high school? Um, and, and I just wanna address that for a second, because adjunct faculty at the various higher education institutions around the state make very little money, and usually have no benefits. So coming to Concord, which has a pretty generous salary scale and benefits, it's not a red flag why someone would wanna do that.
But I wanna remind you that he did not do that, remember?
I'm just saying, but from going from the university level to the public school system is probably a significant increase in salary, and certainly an increase in benefits.
And many adjunct professors are, um, teachers and administrators who are in the public setting. So, you know, it, it, it's, that's a pretty common pathway.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification, because it, I think people are wondering that.
So, thank you, I wanna make sure that we get all board members have an opportunity to ask any questions. Um, Ms. West, do you have any questions right now? You're remote.
Uh, I don't, I just, it still sounds to me as though one of the key pieces of this is, once you've determined that there's behavior, um, that, you know, doesn't, doesn't align with the behavior of an educator, is how I, I guess I'm phrasing it. Um, our ability to communicate with other schools and their ability to communicate with us still seems somehow hampered, and I'm just not completely understanding when it comes to references and our ability to say, you know, this person, their contract was not renewed for this reason. Um, I still don't understand the legality of that.
Um, uh, we have great, um, relationships with our public school brothers and sisters, if you will. There's not a superintendent that doesn't call each other, and we have understandings. Like, even if we take a candidate, or we're looking at a candidate late in the year, uh, we don't do that without calling each other. So that's very common, that there's that conversation. All my, the only place where I think we need to look at it from a much larger perspective than just Concord is how do we make sure that we understand what happens in private places as it relates to hiring people in a public school? That's all the, I think, Kate, if there's anything, to me, that's where I need to, um, and I intend to, uh, follow up with the Department of Ed.
Mr. Parker, do you have anything else? I, I'm sorry, Ms. West, did that answer your question, or do you have any others?
I believe. No, I think it's been a big dialogue, though, and I, I agree with Kathleen that, and what I brought, is that we need to have these conversations with our private school colleagues, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Ms. West? We cut you off.
I am all set, thank you.
Okay, um, other questions from those members that are here? Thank you, Superintendent, we appreciate the information you gave us. We look forward to getting any of the dates associated with letters that we have asked about.
Yeah, I have that.
And, um, and any additional information that you have. And I personally, as a member of the board, would, would very much encourage you to keep reaching out to the DOE.
Right.
To help us make sure that we have the right systems and checks in place that we, uh, we catch anyone that we possibly can, who may be a threat to our students, so. If there isn't anything else, uh, Superintendent, do you have anything else for the evening?
No, I think that about does it tonight.
I would like to thank the board, and, uh, especially, uh, Vice President Higgins for stepping in in my absence. I was, uh, uh, unable to make it, I was delayed, and I appreciate your, uh, your efforts there, thank you very much. Uh, with that, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Okay, moved by Ms. Cannon. Do we have a second?
Jonathan.
Second by Ms. Higgins. All those, it's a voice vote, so all those in favor, um, state by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned, thank you, everyone, for your evening. We are adjourned, thank you, everyone, for your evening.